All right, welcome to the Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided. Deputy Manager Kelly, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Noting an absence this evening by Commissioner Norton, Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Weatherby.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Dish.
Here.
Commissioner Abrams.
Here.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda moved by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Abrams? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 19th, 2025? I have Commissioner Weatherby and seconded by Councilmember Dish. Any discussion of the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next up is going to be the reports to the Planning Commission. Right before we get there, I just wanted to point out, for those of us that are new at Planning Commission, we have two public comment periods. One's at the beginning, it'll come up pretty quickly, and then there's one towards the end. If you're here about the comp plan, I would recommend that you speak at the beginning one, unless you want to sit through the entirety of the meeting. You can speak at the end as well, but we do have a few site plans, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on.
Is the comprehensive plan what you mean by comp plan?
Oh, yes, the comprehensive plan, yes. For shorthand, thank you. So, yeah, so with that, we're going to move on to reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We'll go to Councilmember Dish.
Thank you very much, Chair Lee. So, I can report that the Dexter Sable Park .6 acre parcel to restore a basketball court to the Ann Arbor Housing Commission housing out there, which is West Arbor, was approved, because why not? And non-conforming structures, which we labored over, was also approved. But the really great thing that was approved last night were two ballot initiatives. Both must pass for either to take effect, and they will give the public an opportunity to revisit the center of the city. And they will give the public an opportunity to consider whether they would authorize the sale for $1 of the center of the city complex, which is a number of parcels, to the Ann Arbor District Library. And the Ann Arbor District Library is interested, has been negotiating a plan with the city administrator, not to say a site plan or anything that would be unwarranted, because the land is not free at the city's disposal yet, but that would include housing and public space and a new state-of-the-art library. So, for that plan to move forward, it would be related to an item on our agenda tonight. So, very happy to announce that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dish. And then we'll go to the manager report. Deputy Manager.
Good evening. I have a few things to share tonight, which is that your next working session, which occurs on March 11th, will cover some additional ordinance changes related to planned unit development modifications and public notification of development proposals. These are additions that staff identified that piggyback on the economic development resolution request by City Council, which were presented to you at a working session last September by Manager Leonard. So, look forward to those items. And I would also say that the working session would be a good chance to ask for any questions on the upcoming noticed items for the 318 agenda, which I will read for you later in just a moment. The March Ordinance Revisions Committee meeting will be canceled to allow staff to continue to work on items presented at the last meeting. Most notably, the research to the bicycle parking regulations continues to be underway. I know that staff are working diligently to conduct interviews with stakeholders and also look at comparison cities. And they are going to continue to do that work in the background. They have no decision points to present to the ORC at this time. And staff will share at your next regular session on March 18th, a memo describing the potential comprehensive plan adoption process. I understand this was requested, and Manager Leonard shared that that will be available at that time. And just a final note, that there are a large number of communications in today's packet, so if you did not get a chance to look at that area of your agenda, there were many which were added in the afternoon and sort of early evening today. So, if you open the agenda at another time, you may not have seen them.
Thank you. Do other committee liaisons or planning commissioners have anything to report? All right, seeing none, written communications are in today's packet. Okay, we're going to move on to the first public comment session. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing. We'll first hear from those present and then the remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star and i if on the phone, or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And for phone access, please call 877-853-5247, enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom, and you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and speak clearly and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. And is there anyone present who would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Do I have to press the red button?
No, no.
Oh, it's already pressed. Hi.
Hello, welcome.
My name is Nancy Leff, and I reside at 1512 Montclair Place. I'm here to address residential zoning proposals in the city's master plan that is currently under discussion. And I want to note that I'm speaking only for myself, and here are a few of my concerns. Number one, building heights. New builds need to accommodate any building with existing rooftop solar and consider the overshadowing effects on lower-rise buildings. Two, lot combinations and subdivisions. I feel that they must have minimum and maximum size limits established, and this point deserves further discussion. Housing equity and affordability are very critical concerns for me and should be, obviously, for the city. Infrastructure. Specific plans are needed to address increased waste, traffic congestion, wear and tear on our streets, parking, public transportation, and many more that will result in the increased density proposed in this plan. My concern is this plan could result in large multi-unit buildings eliminating the majority of single-family homes. With thoughtful guidelines and input from all stakeholders, I welcome increased housing equity and density. I am not a NIMBY. I am not against increased density in our neighborhoods, but I am against losing the personalities and characteristics of our long-established neighborhoods. I live in Lobupa, Lower Burns Park, because I love that our houses are packed together like sardines, and we know each other's lives. I do not want to lose this. I'd also like to comment that there are neighbors here in the audience who won't be speaking, but I would like them to raise their hands if they have similar and/or other concerns about this plan. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Dubrowski. I live at 1202 Brooklyn. I'm a resident of Ann Arbor, and I've been a homeowner here since 1997. I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Nancy said, and you have a number of emails from me in your packet. I'm going to take my opportunity to tell you a story, because I think stories are often more powerful. The story involves an elderly woman that I had a chance to meet who lived on Dewey. I met her because she was fearful in her own home, because there were numerous college parties going on two houses down from her home, a long-term home that she had lived in. She was afraid to go in the backyard because of noise and profanity from her neighbors. I still remember her face and the fear on her face in her home. A year or so later, I drove by that house. It had been sold. There was a two-story addition on the back and multiple scooters parked outside. It would have been a lovely family home, a home for young professionals, but it turned into yet another nine-month rental property in my neighborhood. Your plan offers no assurances that the kinds of people you think will come to live in Ann Arbor -- sorry, I'm angry, my voice is shaking -- families, young professionals, and people who can't otherwise afford to live in the city will actually come and live in the housing types that you are proposing. There are no guardrails to ensure that I will not end up like that elderly woman, trapped in my home, full of my family memories that I have built in that home since I have lived there, since my children have been born. No sunlight, noise, fear to go in my backyard, increased flooding in my backyard, no place to park, because your unlimited units would increase the parking on my street, which is already difficult. A house is not something on a board to be moved around like a chess piece. A house holds the history of the people who live in it, and I know the history of the people who lived before me in my home, and I treasure what their contribution did to my home. Sorry, I'm really angry. I request that the Planning Commission immediately slow down this process and ensure that the voices of the neighborhoods are heard, particularly the neighborhoods close to the city center and to the university. I am a resident of one of those neighborhoods. I have a student. I understand the priorities. I also work for the university, and I have a sense of their priorities as well. If it were not for the Michigan Daily, I would have known nothing about these plans. And I am a concerned citizen who pays attention. So, I have asked that you slow this process down and engage with the people whose lives and homes you are going to impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Dubrowski. I live at 1202 Brooklyn, Linda's husband, actually. I would like to just draw your attention to your own publication where you talk about low-rise residential. And there's a bullet point in there, you're probably familiar with it. It says, "Community conversation was around four units and minimal height increase. Planning Commission direction is around four stories, no limit, or regulation by number of units." Now, I agree with what's been said so far. I think the people who know about this are the policy walks, they're the people who are very passionate about affordable housing, and we're all concerned about it, because we have kids, right? But the fact is, I think where we're all in agreement, or we should be in agreement, is we want success and we want what's best for Ann Arbor. We're not going to have that if we just listen to one portion of the city. As has been said, we have found out recently, only recently about this, that we're people who are involved. Now, unfortunately, the local media has been -- there's not much local media now, right, unfortunately. Years ago, we'd have the newspaper, we would read about this, we would know about it. We're finding out about it pretty late. But I think just based on this, the fact that you've had direction, you've changed direction, that's how I read it, after the public discourse, tells me that you need time to get this right, and that means more time to plan this out and make the right decisions. I would be totally in support of you having more time to do the right thing, rather than rushing something without getting the input of the entire community who would be affected. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Jovins. I live at 1054 Martin Place. I've lived in Burns Park for 18 years. I sent you some information regarding our neighborhood that is in your packet. I wanted you to see that we already have quite a balanced mix of housing types and sizes in our neighborhood. After more research on the city assessor site and walking the neighborhood with my plat map, I discovered that North Burns Park has approximately 519 separate dwelling units, and 40% of those are already in multi-unit buildings. I estimate that at least 40% of our dwelling units are also rentals, plus 16 fraternities, sororities, and co-ops. That is more housing diversity than the average neighborhood, I'll wager. But because of our proximity to campus, we are under intense pressure by speculators intending to tip this longstanding balance in their favor. The 2022 zoning code change, which increased the number of units allowed per lot in the R2, was de facto upzoning for our neighborhood. In North Burns Park, a developer recently bought a home, tore it down, and built $1,500 per-bed apartments in its place. Developers have bought smaller homes, doubled their size, and resold them for a million-plus. This is to say that new dwelling units are almost always more expensive than what they replace. I believe that the blanket upzoning of residential neighborhoods like you are now proposing is massive deregulation in favor of speculators, developers, and landlords. I'm concerned that the comprehensive plan draft that we have been shown is a scorched-earth approach to planning. When you look around the country, you will see that the results of these one-sided, top-down, cookie-cutter plans are always the same: higher housing costs, loss of middle-class housing, destruction of communities, tree canopy loss, and historic homes trucked off to landfills. We want something better from our Planning Commission. Other college towns like Madison and Boulder wrote their own plans after neighborhood engagement. They kept a variety of appropriate residential zones while still allowing for growth. I realize that Ann Arbor's outsized development population goals were handed down to you by the city council. I have seen very little research put forth as to why we need such an extreme plan in the first place, nor how the city infrastructure could even accommodate it or sustain it. I would like you to look at Ann Arbor's residential neighborhoods with your own eyes. Walk the streets of the neighborhood with us, and consider how your recommendations will play out there. We want a growth plan that works for everybody, and that means residents too, not just those looking to make a buck off the value of our land.
My name is Rob Russell. I live at 2004 Cressland Street. I've lived in and around Ann Arbor since I was in first grade, and I've been a homeowner now for over 20 years. And it's not until this year that I felt compelled to come and complain about something the city's wanting to do. I attended probably the same informational meeting that a lot of these people did last month. It was refreshing to be made aware that the zoning changes were being planned. Since I hear that future residential notice is already on the chopping block, it's no shock to me that transparency is still being eroded. But tonight, I'm here about your residential rezoning, concept of a plan. I and others believe the Planning Commission's current proposal with the goals of affordability and densification of residential areas will fail and drastically. First of all, renters are already three times more likely to face economic insecurity due to housing costs than homeowners, and rents, as we all know, only go up, unlike the fixed mortgage payments. If the sale of a residential lot goes to a single family, it already fails the densification plan. If it goes to a developer, increasing density with rental units, we fall back into the pit of outrageous rents. In either case, I feel affordability is questionable, since Ann Arbor is famous for what I will charitably call robust and growing property values. The second, developers who are buying in Ann Arbor these days are increasingly out-of-town real estate investors who see our city more as a revenue line item, as opposed to a community full of people. Paying them our rent funnels money out of the local economy and into shareholders living who knows where. Third, the city aims to increase residential density using building codes that focus on frontages and heights, rather than building types and purposes. However, it's my understanding there's nothing in place to ensure any designs mesh with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. And developers make decisions based on revenue, bang for their buck, and the lack of zoning control and enforcement will only harm neighborhood aesthetics, especially in traditional and historic areas like North Burns Park. Finally, there are no requirements to provide any parking for the new four-story apartment buildings that will be perfectly legal as a result of this change. Bottom line, I feel this plan will actually result in reduced affordability, crowded streets, and loss of Ann Arbor's character and charm, while simultaneously depleting our local economy. I implore you to find another solution.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hank Berry. I have just a couple of comments and maybe a question. At the last meeting that I saw on cable, Brett Leonard was responding to this point about 35-foot heights and one to four units, and he said the following, and I typed this out verbatim from the -- made a transcript. Here's what Brett said. "There was a conversation about the appropriateness of lockwood to be imposed in that. I'm interpreting the balance of your conversation as is, as that's fine. If lockwood goes into a neighborhood, that's fine, as long as it is meeting whatever those form-based requirements, height, that is fine. So, we are not going to be trying to somehow arbitrarily scale down the size of buildings beyond some large parameters to provide the most flexibility." This is a picture of lockwood. It's 50 feet high. It's about 150,000 square feet, and it has 154 units. My question is, is the proposal right now that that would be okay? Okay, without an answer, let me just make a couple more comments.
Oh, sure. It's your time, necessarily. It's not our time. We're here to listen. So, it's not a lack of response?
Well, Mr. Leonard took your lack of response in the last meeting to be agreement that lockwood is okay. He did. He said, "If I don't hear anything negative from you, then I'm going to assume it's okay, and I'm not going to ask for a vote right now." That's what he said. So, my question is, where are we in the process?
Do you know yet? Is that true?
Do you know? Do you not know? Do you have a draft? Do you not have a draft? Where are we?
Yeah, this is a -- yeah, it's not a -- this is your time to speak, so.
Okay.
So, how will he get his question answered?
It's his time to speak. Thank you.
Is this okay? It's a simple yes or no? Simple yes or no? Okay, let me just make a couple more points. My second point relates to the oft-repeated claim of planning representatives that the comprehensive plan is just a roadmap, specific zoning changes will come later. In other words, don't panic, right? Don't worry about it, because, you know, this is just a general plan. However, Section 33 of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act says you have to provide zoning recommendations in the plan. Indeed, the city's November 2009 master plan has specific zoning proposals in almost every section. The word zoning is used 134 times in the land use section of the master plan. So, we should just stop saying that, and I've heard it so many times. This is just, oh, don't worry about this, it's okay. It's just general. Finally, now I say this with respect. Chairman Lee, I think you should recuse yourself from these considerations. And I say that because of your previous employment, your current employment.
Thank you. That's time.
It puts you in a position where you can't be objective and balanced about this. And that's saying, you know, I appreciate all your service, but I just think it's too much of a conflict.
Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Jean Leverton. I actually live in Upper Water Hill, which is by Mac Open, off of Miller and Pomona. And I was sort of drawn to talk tonight, because I understood that. I also want to thank the volunteers who serve on this board, because I know it's a really big time commitment. And I do feel lucky. I have been to, I think, three or four different public zoning conversations. Most of them were held at the Public Library downtown, and there was an early one, possibly even before the pandemic, where we went around and put stickers on like what we wanted, and we had like small group conversations. And so, I know that there has been generally like several years' worth of conversations. I just want to kind of say that. And then I just wanted to share that, you know, at least, and this is information again before the pandemic, but that approximately 80,000 people commute to Ann Arbor every day. And just anecdotally, younger people I know who are looking to buy a home are often priced out of Ann Arbor, and they'll end up buying a home in a nearby community and driving in, and then that just creates more traffic. It's not sustainable. It just -- there are people who want to live here who have a hard time. I thought it might be helpful to just share a little bit of information from that radical publication, the AARP, which talks about bring back middle missing housing, right? That zoning over the years has actually gotten more restrictive, and a lot of the housing types that were described by some of the Lower Burns Park residents are actually not currently allowed to be zoned anymore, right? Things have gotten more restrictive. And so, across the U.S., there seems to be a mismatch between available housing stock and what people want and need. And this is partly due to shifting demographics. I'm not going to read the whole article, but I just kind of got home from work. I apologize. Right? Rapidly aging population, shrinking household sizes, and also a growing demand for walkable living. And the AARP is really interesting, because they talk about like, how do we age in place? And how do we really recognize the need for allowing for lots of different kinds of housing? One kind of housing might be small apartment buildings, you know, maybe up to three or four stories. Other kinds of housing might be cottage courts, right? But duplexes, townhomes, right? But so-called, it's called missing middle housing. And this missing middle housing is a critical part of the solution. And a lot of these residencies are described as missing, because very few have actually been built since the early 1940s. And so, I want to commend -- I know I have to go. I want to really encourage people to talk about the comprehensive plan and to keep trying to make flexible zoning, so that we can have more people enjoy our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Jill. I live also in Lower Burns Park, and I was a longtime renter, and now I'm a longtime homeowner. I'm old enough to be both. So, yeah, I'm still learning about all of this. So, I'm going to say like the piece that I know and then where. So, I strongly support the goals of increasing affordability, diversity of residence, and housing options, and environmental sustainability, right? Check plus on all three. And I also believe, from what I've learned so far, that increasing density could play a role in this larger vision for realizing those aspirations. But I don't really see, and I'm not an expert here, how like A right now is leading to B. So, like, there's like what we're going to do, and this is the effect we hope it has. And here are some beautiful pictures of middle housing and stuff. And I feel like it's a very kind of, right now, a very blanket deregulation, it feels like, from my perspective. And so, I said I don't support the upzoning in its current form, because I just believe more guides and regulations are needed to ensure that increasing density does deliver these social goods, and that it also does so in a way that minimizes unintended negative consequences, something that don't need to happen, right? Things that don't need to happen. So, given this, what I'm -- they ask right now is just to give each neighborhood with residents across the support spectrum, because in our neighborhood, we're having robust debates, and people are all over, an opportunity to find some common ground and to customize what feels right now like a one what feels right now like a one-size-fits-all template to the specific sort of like needs and aspirations, concerns of each neighborhood community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Connor Reynolds, and I live at 1108 Brooklyn Avenue, and my wife and kid live there as well. We've been homeowners there for a little over two years, and already I can tell you that if we were looking to buy now, we would not be able to buy our house. The prices have gone up so, so much. I support the rezoning attempt, and also I support the fact that it's citywide. I think that any neighborhood would come up with reasons why they should not get rid of single-family zoning in their neighborhood, and by making it citywide, that spreads the impact out across the city. It doesn't just concentrate it all in one neighborhood. Also, I honestly think that the impact of it is probably actually not going to be that great unless there's additional steps taken by the city. So the other thing I would really urge is that, in addition to rezoning, and y'all may already be doing this, you're experts, that you also put in place changes that incentivize certain types of building, and missing middle housing generally, so that we don't just get this doughnut hole where we have single-family homes, which are the cheapest to build per square foot of any type of housing right now, and large apartment buildings. I think that it's really critical to look at, you know, what in the building code is making it so that that is the case. And there are a few things that have already been pointed out by organizations around the country. The single, using a single staircase for buildings up to six stories is one example. I actually saw that Memphis made it so that buildings of three to six units are now applicable to be built under the residential code rather than the commercial code, which allows them to not have sprinkler systems, which would kind of go against the single staircase model. But I think having an either/or would be a good idea here in Ann Arbor. I realize that the city itself can't necessarily do these things, but advocating at the state level would be really helpful. And then also, there's things the city could do, like, I know South Van Indiana has free-approved building plans that developers can use to build on lots. And I think Ann Arbor, if it's serious about making these types of housing actually go into neighborhoods, should supply similar thing for the missing middle housing types. And not only that, but maybe also that would alleviate some of the aesthetic concerns that people have. And finally, yeah, well, I forgot the rest of it. I didn't write anything down. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Hi. I got involved recently with the Brockman Tree Preservation Project, because I walk on Brockman all the time. Let me tell you a story about Scioto Township. In 1988, there was a, I moved there, and there was vast overdevelopment going on, and we saw that, and we organized real well, and we took over the township with four trustees, and we changed the development direction of Scioto Township quite well. And here in Ann Arbor, I really do support the concept of upzoning. I support the mayor and council, but, and people, when people would come to me aghast about these building, huge buildings downtown, I would tell them, well, they've got control of it, they're just going to keep it downtown. Except now, it's not just being kept downtown. Now it's metastasizing all over town. People have got to see what is planned, for where they live in their own neighborhood. And it's not being done in the interest of anyone who lives in Ann Arbor at this time, is it? It's being done in the interest of people who might come here sometime. That's, the voters are not going to vote yes for that. Nothing here is for the benefit of people who are here now. And you must admit that no town has ever built its way out of being popular and high rent. No town, ever. Okay. The great beneficiary here, this is the private equity capital that is doing the investing now. Everybody, I hope people know that, not our voters, they're not benefiting from this at all. My main concern is that this upzoning will kill off a huge amount of big trees. People might just start cutting them down if they hear someone talking about it, because Ann Arbor doesn't have a regular tree, a real tree ordinance. We've either got to have a real tree ordinance, like Evanston, Illinois, or this can't happen. And we've got to have this happen after an election, where the city council has based its legitimacy on this plan, and people get to vote on city council members based on their position on this plan. And then we'll see this plan go down in flames, and some sort of a reasonable concept of upzoning emerge from that, hopefully. So, yeah, it's absurd for me to run for city council, but I encourage people who really believe in the character of this town to run for city council. We've got to slow this down. People on council have to take responsibility for this, and it can't happen until after an election. Those trees on Brockman had better stay there, and I think that they will. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Ursula Nellajoy, and public speaking is not my best point, but I want to let you know that the other Ann Arbor citizens here that seem to know a lot more about the situation of the dramatic developments that's been happening, I absolutely echo their concerns. I came back to care for my mom, who was a professor of education, and she was, I was helping her at the end of her life, and my understanding is that it was too expensive, so she had to actually do the last few weeks of her life in Fenton because it was too expensive here for her to live. And I wanted to let you know that my father was a county commissioner for 13 years, Raymond George Schultz, and he helped beautify the art train area along the Huron River. I went to community high school, and, and when I came back to be with my mom, I'm like, oh, wow, we're moving up. My little Ann Arbor town is, you know, understandably, people want to live here. But this meeting happened just a few days after I had this idea of, well, I think of the squirrels as my neighbors, and, and there's a lot of critters. I think about the animals, the humans here as kind of critters in the Michigan woods, and then there's the woodchucks, and there's the possums, and they find places in these neighborhoods to live, to eke out something. And sometimes it gets a little tight between the humans and the critters, but I'm concerned with all the high rises, is there a plan for either to escort them somehow, to take them out, or where will they go? They'll just, it's just, it gets a little bit frantic there, it's not enough room and not enough affordable housing for me. So I'm, I'm looking to, now that my mother's died, that it's time, I need to go, because I've looked around. I do home health aid. I take care of little old ladies at the end of their lives, and $1,000 is a lot of money per month for me to pay for a studio. So I, I need to go back where, just, I need to find some other places that will work for me. Right now, I'm at the Ann Arbor Zen Buddhist Temple, and that's been really good, but it's time to find my own spot, and so I'm not going to be able to stay in Ann Arbor, and that's one of the reasons, is just, it's not affordable. And that's too bad. I still enjoy the backroads with the tree canopies. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan Goris. I live at 1116 Henry since the year 2000, so about 25 years. I've worked in the city since 1993. So until this progressive kind of eye-openers started happening recently, I guess I took it for granted, the city for granted in some ways, so now it's, it's kind of on my radar, these changes that are being proposed. I know the master plan's been around since about 2009, and so being at 1116 Henry, I'm at, in the Lower Burns Park, which a lot of, a lot of my neighbors are here. And so what I saw on the master plan, and I don't know, I guess I've missed some of this because I stay busy, and so I have mixed feelings because I work in civil engineering and surveying, so it could also bring me work, some of these changes. I thought we were still going to be zoned, single-family in that 2009. It was, it was kind of gray, but I thought that Lobopu was supposed to kind of keep the single-family zoning until 2024, 2025. Did something change, I guess, that I missed? Because that map kind of said that it was going to stay that way, so I don't, I don't know, we can't answer these questions right now, you're going to. My concern is more with if it just becomes all mixed use and other parts of the neighborhoods were kind of going in reverse, because it was, I think it was 2006 is when we got the single-family zoning change, that a lot of people here actually worked to get that because of the schools, the nice neighborhood where you can walk and have raised families. So I just, I just hope it doesn't like cover the whole neighborhood again as mixed use, because I worry about landlords that are from out of state or from out of city that aren't very receptive to complaints or concerns of neighbors that are single-family or small dwellings or small units sizes. And I have examples, I have some friends that live in the neighborhood. They had neighbors that were landlords that were grandfathered in. They repaved the driveway two or three feet onto their property, changed the drainage so it all drained toward their basement, and we surveyed the property line and the landlord in Florida or whatever state they were in, had their attorney write a letter that said, well, if you try to, you know, mark out the property line, you're infringing on my rights. And that was, they were just concerned about that they were going to have to fix the driveway that was just paved and not the neighbor that was a single resident that lived and worked in Ann Arbor. So I just hope you take concerns of, you know, the potential downstream effect of all of it. So thank you. Thanks for serving.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Ramsburg. I live at 1503 Cambridge Road. I want to start off by saying that I think we all would like affordability, sustainability, and equity to be part of this plan. I just want to know whether the examples, the concrete, what is actually happening now, is actually giving us those values. And I'm going to go back to the, in the example of North Burns Park neighborhood where a single-family home in an R2 neighborhood was demolished. Unbeknownst to neighbors, very little transparency in this change in the UDC. The required minimum lot size for duplex had been changed, and so instead of the expected possible duplex replacement, we were, we were faced with two duplexes, so four units on the single-family original to a zoned lot. So the first things to go were the trees, which were considerable, six mature trees and two huge maples. Then after the trees went, the entire structure was demolished, the old house, stone foundations, all went to the landfill. We asked the developer if he was going to have any of it recycled, and he said, no, he did not, he didn't have any buyers for the recycling, so it was all going to the landfill. So my question is, is this sustainable development? Do we take into equation what goes to the landfill when these houses are replaced? So now the lot is filled with two large houses, four units with four bedrooms each, five bathrooms, each renting at 1,500 a bedroom, and a parking lot, so 80% impervious surfaces and no trees any longer. So is this affordable? Is it, is it sustainable? And is it equitable? So the tweak to upzone this neighborhood reduced the value of nearby homes as family homes, as owner-occupied families with possibly children, et cetera. And it has increased the value of those nearby homes as speculative homes for demolition, for modification, for higher market rate rental units. I'm not sure that that meets the goals of affordability, sustainability, and equity. And I think tonight you're hearing from people who have, who share that concern, that you are not, have not thus far, what we've seen from the comprehensive plan has not taken a broad picture of residents who live in Ann Arbor, residents who are concerned about the negative impacts that this plan might have. I have something to add.
Thank you. If you can want to give me, yeah, happy to actually, I'll pass it on. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. When I was first sitting down, I was thinking about saying some angry things, but there's been enough of that. So I think that, yes? Oh, yeah, sorry. My, my name is Jim. I live in the Fifth Ward. I've lived here for a million years. And I think that a lot of the concerns here sound to me more like concerns about capitalism. And I agree that I, I think we need to work on replacing capitalism with a, with a better, more equitable, more egalitarian economic system, but I, I don't think that the comprehensive plan is going to do that. So I, I don't want you all to feel weighed down by the need to overturn capitalism as you, as you prepare the comprehensive plan. And other than that, I'd just like to say that, that I support making the comprehensive plan for land use here in Ann Arbor as friendly as possible to every type of housing known to humanity. And that's all. Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Kirk Westfall, 3505 Charter Place, Ward Two. Thanks so much again for your hard work on the comprehensive plan so far, particularly folks who are serving on the subcommittee and the steering committee. I appreciate the strong feedback you've given to date. I agree that we should be skeptical of proposals that condition housing construction on the construction of other uses like office and retail. I appreciate you rejecting the proposal to allow our most car-dependent areas like Arborland, Westgate, and Maple Village to get a new lease on life as strip malls for the next 50 years. Brixmore does not do mixed use, they are not our friend. I appreciate that you objected to the consultant continuing to talk about a 35-foot height limit when you gave clear direction that 48 feet should be considered. And I'm disappointed that folks have spread misinformation that you've proposed some form of setback or eliminating setbacks or even eliminating single-family homes. There are plenty of ways that city council can accommodate shading on neighbors, and plenty of cities do this. I urge you to consider the draft plan you'll be getting back through the lens of housing abundance. To me, housing abundance means that unless you can justify a reason to limit housing, the assumption should be that you don't limit housing. We know from the experience of other cities that very little, if any, change will happen in owner-occupied residential areas, even if you allow, allow larger buildings. Even in commercial areas, as we can see, it takes years or decades to redevelop properties. What remains my primary concern right now is that the consultant is proposing effectively freezing downtown in place, even in places where new housing has been approved. They're doing this by placing an 80-foot height limit in the so-called transition zone. This is a zone that already tapers its height down to R1 and R2 districts. Why does this zone need to be capped? The proposals for transition have inexplicably bounced around from 120 feet to 80 feet, but if it stays at 80 feet, it will make buildings like Five Corners and Beekman instantly non-conforming and prevent more high rises near them, right where people want to live and where builders are building. So I ask you to, when you get this draft back, consider the heights of the transition zone, consider if it needs it at all, and to strive for housing abundance. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Trudeau, and I am here right now to speak as a resident of a neighborhood that is, I just live about a couple dozen feet outside of downtown. It's also lots of student renters, a lot of pressure from the university for housing on developers who want to develop. I overpaid for my house 10 years ago, and I couldn't afford it today. And many of my neighbors are student renters. And many of my neighbors are student renters, and I talk to a lot of them, and I watch the real estate listings, and I kind of see what's happening around the neighborhood. And a lot of them would be happy to pay $1,500 a month for a bedroom in new construction with working air conditioning and no mold and no lead paint and isn't accessible with an elevator and don't have to climb multiple floors of stairs. The rentals in the old decrepit houses across the street from me rent for 1,300, $1,400 a month for a bedroom. So this new construction is desperately needed, and there's a reason developers are able to build it and get those, get those rents. And so if we deny that, then students will pay increasingly more for increasingly worse rental options as, as the university grows. And I've noticed in my neighborhood, more and more of the owner-occupant houses have been purchased by investors who recognize that the rents are just off, off the chain and are converting them to rentals. And I've done the math, like what if a developer bought multiple properties with the R4C zoning and tried to redevelop something nicer? And it doesn't work. None of these properties conform, and so they all have way more units than you could build legally now. If we tore them down, we would have less units than what we could build now. So we need, we need new zoning. We need to update it. And I think the direction of this plan is great. I think it's incremental. And I think the engagement has been extensive, including the input, your ample input you've been receiving tonight and has been over the last year and will continue to be so until it passes. And a lot of the details that people are concerned about is at 48 feet, what's the setback out though? That'll be sorted out in the ordinances. The plan should be simple. The plan should set a direction. The plan should set the expectations for what the boundaries are, and then we'll wrestle with those details as we begin to implement. So keep doing up the good work. Thank you for all the hard work you've all put into this and everybody who's volunteered on the various committees. Stick to the big picture, and I look forward to kind of seeing this move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time?
Thank you, Chair Lee, Planning Commission. Thank you for your hard work on the comp plan. I'm Ken Garber. I live at 28 Haven Hill Court. I'm a renter and a climate activist. I look at literally everything in my life in terms of carbon emissions, which is a very depressing way to live, especially now. But that is my general outlook on life. The comp plan to date, what I've read about carbon emissions is, quote, "reduce carbon emissions through the efficient use of land, buildings, and infrastructure." I can't argue with that, cannot. But there's no mention of fossil fuel combustion. Buildings account for almost 70% of the city's Scope 1 and 2 emissions, with fossil gas combustion making up most of that. The comp plan documents note that density reduces commuter emissions. That's true and necessary. But the gains are a fraction of what you get by avoiding fossil gas. Imagine a new 100-unit apartment complex that prevents 100 commutes. At SEMCOG's average daily commute of 19.3 miles, that building will eliminate 502,000 miles of driving a year, which is great. But if those apartments burn fossil gas for heat, they'll emit 689 metric tons CO2 a year, more than three times the CO2 you're saving in vehicle emissions by ending those commutes. The comp plan should include both. As of now, it seems to be all about reducing vehicle miles traveled. I've seen nothing about reducing fossil gas combustion. The, I believe that there's a narrative out there that sustainability and affordability are in conflict. It's true that utility costs for electrically heated buildings are higher, largely because of DTE's artificially high electric utility rates. But the difference is small compared to the overall expense of renting or owning. For one of these hypothetical apartment units, you'll pay $280 more a year with electric air source heat pumps. That's $23 a month. I don't want to minimize that, but consider the social cost of carbon defined as the present value of all future impacts from additional metric ton of CO2 emissions. In 2023, the EPA set the social cost of carbon at $190 per ton. In our apartment example, that's $110 per unit per month, more than four times what you save by using gas. But because we treat the atmosphere as an open sewer for emissions, we don't count that. Most of the human cost from climate change falls on poor people elsewhere, including the global south. So if we don't reverse course now, we really have no livable future. A three or four-degree hotter world, which is where we're headed, will not be a place, place worth living, even here. The comp plan should be explicit about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. All right. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, do we have remote callers?
We do. There are three callers with their hands raised this evening. The first caller ending in phone number 534. You have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg. I'm calling from 1202 Traver Street in Lower Town, Ann Arbor. There are a lot of letters and a lot of speakers and a lot of great things being said. So I'm going to focus on very specific, one or two items. I'm a landlord. I have, along with partners and investors, about 16 homes, most of which are duplex. Since 1994, we've been providing affordable and workforce housing in gentle density. Duplexes, triplex was my first purchase with two friends. Now, with duplex zoning, people are right. It was kind of on purpose accidental that now you can have today more than two units on a duplex lot. So then what happens after that? I'll give you a real-world example. I've got some pairs of duplex lots where I have housing there, modest size, exactly the same as the neighborhood. Take, for example, one pair on 66 foot, six foot wide lots. I did some quick math here. Using the exact same setbacks that are allowable today, not reducing the setbacks, and going to 48 feet high, I have 10,614 square feet of area. Times 48 feet, that's about 500,000 square foot of a cube that I could build on. Now I'm going to have some parking, some hallways. But that's a 48-foot tall apartment building with neighbors. We have five-foot, yeah, side yard setbacks, double the height of the neighbors. What is that going to do to the affordable and workforce housing that I currently provide in the homes there? If you choose to go to 48 feet, the pressure on the neighborhood for people like me to sell my modest housing to a developer, I don't build those apartment buildings, but if I sell to a developer, that's what's coming, and that pressure's there. Now, I don't live there. I live a block away. I don't think I want to do this to my neighbors. That's my neighborhood. But guess what? I got another pair of lots, although further away, that are even bigger. It's a lot of pressure. My investors are going to say, Tom, why are you holding out? So we need to know missing middle housing types do not necessarily mean missing middle prices. The first thing you do if you change things to be 48 feet tall is increase the cost of the land. Sure, that'll make me wealthier if I sell out. I don't even have to sell. I can go to the bank and borrow. I'm going to increase value right away. But once you increase the cost of the land, that's increased the first piece of the puzzle to building new housing.
Mr. Stalberg, we're at time.
That housing will not. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Our next caller is Adam Jiskovich. You have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Adam Jiskovich calling from Las Vegas Drive in the 4th Ward. As someone who has lived in Ann Arbor for 30 years, I felt I should register my support for this plan. It's interesting to hear people try to frame this as being about long-term Ann Arbor rights protecting so-called neighborhood character against new residents, residents who might be those kind of people, or compare building homes to cancer. We're a desirable community with a severe shortage of homes, and it has made our city unaffordable for many. We cannot continue on that path. We are also in a climate crisis, and we know that compact, dense, walkable urban areas, well-served by public transit, are good for the planet. I watched your last meeting when you discussed the direction of the comprehensive plan, and I am comfortable with the direction that Planning Commission gave to staff. I support more homes being built everywhere in our city. I'm entirely comfortable with four stories in low-rise residential areas like my own. This seems to be only a small increase over the height of many homes in the city that are three stories plus a garden level, particularly some of the townhome developments. I'm supportive of using a form-based code to control density rather than unit density limits. I would like to see plenty of flexibility for lot splits and combinations, and I would like to see everything in the spectrum of missing middle housing allowed by right next door to my home. One thing I didn't hear much about in your last meeting is the transitional mixed-use areas. Like Mr. Westfall, I'd like to see the 80-foot maximum height limit revisited. I think it is fine to have a step-down rule similar to TC1 to limit the height adjacent to low-rise areas. And where this happens in a strip along a corridor, the 80-foot limit is probably appropriate. However, there are some areas where multiple contiguous blocks of transitional mixed-use are proposed, particularly near the downtown core areas. And I think the height limit would unnecessarily limit density toward the interior of those areas or where they adjoin mixed-use hub. It might even make some existing or under-construction buildings non-conforming, and I'm not comfortable with doing that. I think adding additional height steps as buildings get further from low-rise residential would address this. Anyway, I just wanted to offer the perspective of one long-term Ann Arborite who does support these changes and does support housing abundance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jiskovich. Manager Hank? Kelly?
Yeah, sorry. We can go with that.
Yeah, sorry. Manager Kelly.
Our next caller is phone number ending in 446. You have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Hi. My name's Erin. I live at 1039 Olivia Avenue, and I apologize in advance for, I had drafted something, but I'm in the car driving, so I'm going to do my best to kind of remember what I had drafted out. So I, I feel as though the neighborhoods should be able to define the growth a bit more. Each neighborhood has its own issues and goals, and I feel as though the only thing that the Planning Commission can do is kind of give a voice to the neighborhoods and how that best suits them. My neighborhood in particular is a butts campus, and I, as was mentioned earlier, we already have 40% rentals in our neighborhood, which the great majority are lived in by undergrads, not those that are working and living in the city for a long period of time and paying taxes. And just on my block alone, this, within the last few months, I've called multiple times on undergrads for drag racing, shooting guns off in the neighborhood. I've had multiple kids come to my door without shoes on in the middle of the night. I have young kids that go to elementary school down the block. And the point is, is if I get another rental building with a potentially up to 50 or more students next door to me, that dynamic switches even more. And I would just like to have some say in the development, particularly this close to campus, on, on how we kind of deal with these density issues. And I'm, I would love for more affordability and housing options in Ann Arbor. I would really love that. But I do think there are specific things that each neighborhood needs to take into consideration, and I would like a greater voice for all of our neighborhoods. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Manager Kelly, any other speakers?
One last speaker with their hands raised, phone number ending in 798. You have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Rich Fine. I'm in Ward 5. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, great. With all, I'm, I'm representing Ann Arbor, the Ann Arbor chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. With all due respect to those who spoke before me about the density concerns in their neighborhoods, I'm, I'm here like Mr. Garber to primarily talk about the sustainability aspects of the comprehensive plan. As a climate advocacy organization, CCL understands and supports the need for the comprehensive plan to focus on density, especially where it addresses the missing middle and increased development along transportation corridors. We believe this will increase affordability. And for the sustainability, from a sustainability standpoint, it reduces vehicle miles traveled, which addresses the city's carbon neutrality goals, since 30% of Ann Arbor's carbon emissions comes from transportation. But the energy that's used by buildings comprises a much larger share of the city's emissions at about 68, 69%, more than double the emissions from transportation. As we build more, even as we reduce car travel, emissions will actually increase if the city's population grows as projected. That's the case unless we do a lot more to decarbonize our buildings. We see a handful of brief statements in the comprehensive plan documents and presentations that mention including green building practices, but we haven't seen any specifics. We're asking for something more concrete that along with planning for greater density, will also plan that a, there's a minimum recommendation of policies that encourage high levels of efficiency, full electrification, and the use of clean electricity for all new buildings in major rehabs. Most of our community realizes that we're in a climate emergency. Ann Arbor voters have expressed overwhelming support for climate action, with over 70% voting with their wallets by voting for the climate village. The city's development community has recently been establishing itself as a climate leader with the overwhelming share of new multifamily buildings being all-electric. City officials and representatives should extend that leadership by having a comprehensive plan that goes beyond the issues relating to land use and that's fully aligned with our carbon neutrality goals. That means having a comprehensive plan that includes recommendations and guidance that directly addresses building decarbonization. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
That concludes the raised hands through Zoom.
Okay. Give it just two more seconds. Okay. With that, we'll close public comment. I'm going to take a quick second. Thank you all so much for coming to speak. Civic engagement is extremely important, and it can be challenging to speak in public. So I really appreciate the bravery in sharing your comments with us tonight and navigating these tensions in a healthy manner to strengthen civic engagement. So, and dissent is the hallmark of this democracy, so this is important for us to have these discussions. And I really want to make sure that your voice is heard. Two quick notes. Please go to, if you are interested in learning more about this process, please go to a2.gov/planning. There's a right sidebar, and you can click on the envelope button, and it'll sign you up for planning notifications. There will be upcoming meetings when the draft is available and, available for public comment in the summertime. And so that's, I think the timeline right now is that the, the draft is being worked on right now, and it's going to go through a thorough discussion process. We also, for, I'm glad that the neighborhood was able to get the presentation for other neighborhoods that want the presentation and interested other neighborhood groups. Please do email planning@a2.gov. They'll do the best they can to accommodate, and it'll be great to, again, get, get more civic engagement in this particular matter. So thank you all for, for coming. Unfortunately, our-
Can you just repeat the A squared?
Actually, I would like to make a quick correction. The, the website for, the main website, webpage for planning is at a2gov.org/planning.
Thank you.
And in that right sidebar, there is an envelope icon. If you click on that, you can sign up not only for planning-related updates, but you can sign up for all manner of notifications from different city departments that may be of interest to you. You can quit them anytime. And the web, I'm sorry, the email address would be planning@a2gov- And the web, I'm sorry, the email address would be planning@A2gov.org is our main inbox, is monitored multiple times daily, and then we direct your inquiry to the relevant staff.
Thank you again. All right. With that, we're going to move on to public hearings scheduled for the next business meeting. We'll turn to staff. Deputy Manager Kelly.
For the Tuesday, March 18th City Planning Commission meeting, there are five public hearings on your agenda, the first of which is an ordinance to amend Section 5.28.4 Citizen Participation Requirements of Chapter 55, the Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to modify sections to change title. Timing: establish responsibility for city staff to share information publicly and to add additional requirements. The second is an ordinance to amend Sections 5.28 General Procedures, 5.29.4 Wetlands Use Permit, 5.29.6 Site Plan, 5.29.7 Area Plans, Section 5.29.11 Planned Unit Development District of Chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to remove public hearing requirements from site plan reviews. The third public hearing is an ordinance to amend Section 5.29.9B Land Divisions of Chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the City, of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to remove notification requirements from land divisions. The fourth hearing is an ordinance to amend Section 5.30 Amendments to Development Approvals of Chapter 55, Unified Development Code of the City of Ann Arbor to modify processes for modifications to previously approved projects. And finally, 1155 Arlington Boulevard Annexation and Zoning, a petition from owners of 1155 Arlington Boulevard to annex the one-acre parcel from Ann Arbor Township into the city and zone R1A Single Family Dwelling District.
Thank you. That'll take us to Section 8A, which is unfinished business, which there are none. That takes us to our first regular business item, which is 1209 South University Avenue. This is a proposed site plan to construct new 19-story mixed-use residential development building with ground floor retail on a 0.39-acre site zoned D1. The proposed development includes demolition of an existing retail building and reconstruction of a pedestrian corridor along Church Street and South University Avenue. The site is located in Ward 1, and we will first start with petitioner presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Allison Mills. I'm a vice president with CRG. We're the developer of the project. I'm just going to do some quick intros of our team, and then I'll hand it over to our architecture team to walk you through the project. With me tonight is Ishwan Walker. He's a principal with the Lamar Johnson Collaborative. They're our architecture team on the project. They're actually in-house to us at CRG. We do architecture and development vertically integrated here. We also have Ted Hirsch with Midwestern Engineering. They're our civil engineer on the project. And then Brad Moore, who has been supporting our architecture and design team. Thank you. I'll just give you a little bit of background about CRG. We're a real estate development investment firm. We're headquartered in Chicago, but we're active all across the U.S. We've been around for just over 30 years, have developed about 220 million square feet of property. My team specifically focuses on all of our residential projects throughout the U.S. Next. Thank you. We also have a couple partners on the project that I want to introduce on the ownership side. So locally, we've been partnered with Hughes Properties. They were the developer of Vic Village North and South. And then some of our team in our previous company had worked with them on the landmark project, also on South U. So a long partnership that we're excited to continue again in Ann Arbor. And then we've also JV'd with Shape Pack Partners. They are out of Chicago. They're another longtime partner of ours. We've worked on several projects together, but really focused on like more unique residential and retail experiences. So we're really excited to bring their expertise to this project as well. But with that, I will turn it over to Ishwan.
Let me make this bigger. Perfect. All right, so I'm going to take a few minutes and talk about the architecture, character, and components of this project, and also talk about the process of how we got here. So we'll start big picture with where the site's located. So the site's identified here on the northeast corner of South U and Church. You could see this is a zoning map we have put together where we're bounded by two primary streets, as they're defined in the zoning, and we're right off the special zoning district. There's some basic building data on the right there, where you can see we have about 183 units and over 19 stories. It comes to just over 250,000 square feet. This is a rendering from the project's northwest, kind of over the campus, with our building kind of glowing. And you know, everyone knows the nature of the South U area here, where, you know, the few years ago, the scope and scale of projects there was a lot smaller, but now you could see this project is right in line with the height and density of what's around it, and even the university towers to directly adjacent to it. You could see the, what we'll talk about later, the photovoltaics there on the roof kind of stand out in this rendering. Okay, now we'll move to some floor plans, and this is a first floor plan, and you might be saying, wow, that looks a bit disjointed and segmented, and it is. So the site had, it came with a few unique challenges. So one of them was site access agreements to the property directly to the north and also the property directly to the east. We also have a DTE easement along the north portion of the site, which you can see with kind of a single hash signifier there. And then lastly, we're maintaining access for solid waste removal with maintaining a 15-foot clear height for a garbage truck to come into the site with a 25-foot tip zone, which you can kind of see in that cross-hatched area directly above the pink. So with South University being bottom on the page and Church on the left, the pink area is representing the lobby of the building, and the peach area to the left is representing about 3,700 square feet of retail there right on the corner. Another key thing to point out on this first floor plan is there's two on-street loading zones, one directly below that pink lobby on South U for Uber Eats and package drop-off, that sort of thing, and then a second one over on Church Street for the retail loading. You know, as I mentioned earlier, with the site access agreements and the trash truck access, you know, we're providing this pedestrian-friendly vehicle access through the center of the site, which you could see there, which we're controlling with hydraulic bollards that will lower, and a perforated coiling door in the back that'll still let light through. The intent here is make it very walkable for the tenants of the building, where they can flow over to the retail space, well-lit and keep it safe, but still allow the vehicles to access the site as needed. Second floor and moving up, I'm going to go a little quicker here. So the purple represents the dwelling units, and we have a variety down from studios up to two-bedroom, four-bedrooms, and five-bedrooms, a good variety of each. On the left here is amenity space overlooking the corner. That's Level 2. I'll go up a floor, and this level is, kind of represents levels 3 through 18. It's very typical going up. You'll notice the 5-foot setback along Church and South University to respond to the downtown zoning criteria. I mean, you'll notice the variety of different unit types that are represented on the plan. Going up again to the top floor, Level 19, so here it's all amenity space, and this is a variety of fitness and other public social areas, as well as a exterior amenity space, kind of a smaller one on the southwest corner there. And all the back-of-house mechanical spaces have been pushed to the north off the main streets. Oh, and lastly, here is a overall roof plan showing the solar component of the project. So in order to achieve the 30% height increase, you know, we're at full electrification on day one and 60% lot coverage with photovoltaics. So here, based on our current estimated annual production, we're just under 235 megawatt-hours per year for the property. And then we'll get into the renderings, which is a little more fun, and we're trying to create something exciting here. You can see this is looking from the southwest, and you can see the distinct top, middle, and base of the building, which is important here. And we're working to, you know, use a mix of masonry, and these are kind of subdued-colored, but they're, we're trying to detail it in a very sophisticated, a very sophisticated way, where it's elegant. On the first floor here, we're working to, you could see, we're working to achieve a, you know, a real pedestrian scale to the, to the development. You can see the setback there at Level 2 to respond to the downtown zoning criteria. And you can also see kind of that 45-foot regimented, you know, delineation change along the facade as you march down the building. Here's a quick slide to talk about the materials on the building. So we have masonry on the main facades of Church and South University with metal panel and glass on the top floor, and then it changes to a cementitious-type product on the north facade off the main streets. I'll move quickly through the elevation, seeing the time. This is the south elevation, you know, you can again see the breakup of the building, both going up and working across in the elevation. This is the Church Street facade, which only the portion on the left there is truly on the street. The other portion is kind of faded off in the distance. And then we'll go to the north and the east facade. So here's some building sections showing us up to that 194-foot cap that's allowed with the 30% height reduction with the full electrification and the photovoltaics. Quick summary of how we got here. So first, it was July 11th of last year was the citizen participation meeting. We got a lot of questions here about electrification, HVAC systems, and a few impacts on the adjacent properties. So at this point, we weren't quite sure if the project was going to go fully electric. Turns out it did, so that worked out really well. We moved on to the design review board, which is on October 7th. There was a lot of, again, questions about electrification here. There were some questions related to lighting and safety in that pedestrian-friendly vehicular access point, which we did our best to address. And now we're here, we're with the City Planning Commission on March 4th. And quick few points about sustainability. So this building is interesting in that the, you know, the Michigan Building Code is going to change in April. We're going to be one of the first buildings permitted under the new 2021 code. And so that adopts a more stringent version, the IECC Energy Code, which has higher, you know, higher efficiency standards for lighting, for HVAC systems, and more robust requirements for the facade, both tightness and R-value. You know, you could read a few more benefits of the sustainability components here as well. So that kind of concludes what we wanted to say, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to staff presentation. Planner Shake.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the thorough presentation from the applicant. Makes my presentation a little bit easier. So as the applicant said, and as the introduction said, this is looking at three different sites, 1201, 1209, 1213, South University Avenue, and planning to do a 19-story mixed-use residential building on that site or on those sites. Wanted to call Planning Commission's attention to a few development items that were also mentioned in the applicant's presentation. The site intends to have roughly 4,332 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. The building will be 19 stories or approximately 195 feet by using the 30% sustainability bonus exception to height limits. So this is provided through the solar collector array on the rooftop that intends to cover at least 60% of the building footprint, which is as specified in Section 518.4 of the UDC. Additionally, as applicant also mentioned, the electrical panels will have the capacity to serve the building by electricity from, and the intention is this is from day one. There is no vehicular parking provided in the, in the project. However, there are 79 Class A and two Class C bicycle parking spaces in the project. And 2/3 of the bicycle, the Class A bicycle spaces are like zero lift spaces. In other words, the, someone can come in with their bicycle, and it's either counterweighted or counterbalanced that it is vertical to save space within the bicycle, the Class A bicycle room, but it doesn't require any physical force from, or minimal physical force from the bicycle user. The two Class C bicycle spaces is a relatively small number, however, that does meet code in this area in D1. Class C bicycle space is based on the square footage of commercial space. So since it's a little bit more than 4,000 square feet of commercial space, that two does meet code. And given like the competing uses in the public amenity space with the DDA and other amenities, DDA's programming and other amenities within the sidewalk space, there are only two of the Class C provided. Along that line, along those lines, though, sidewalks and reconstruction of both pedestrian corridors will also be provided. This project passed multiple rounds of development reviews from planning, the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, the fire, natural resources, parks, engineering, systems planning, solid waste, land development, and transportation. Across all of these departments and areas, staff recommended approval or approval with conditions, which you can find in the staff report, minimal conditions that have been included in the development agreement. With that being said, staff, staff's recommendation is that the site plan be approved because the contemplated development will comply with all applicable state, local, and federal laws, ordinances, standards, and regulations. The development limits the disturbance of natural features to the minimum necessary to allow a reasonable use of the land.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. With that, we're going to move on to public comment. So this is a public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants to speak remotely. Please press star and i if on the phone or use the raise hand feature in Zoom for phone access. Please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please ensure that you're in a quiet area. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments, and is there anyone present that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Garber.
Thank you again, Charlie Ken-Garber, 28 Everhill Court. I commend CRG for going full electric on day one with all-electric heating. Sounds like Mr. Walker has had to contend with numerous questions about building electrification over the course of this process. I hope you don't mind if I ask a few more. For future reference, can you describe the specific system that you're using? Is it VRF, variable refrigerant flow? Are you employing PTACs, package terminal air conditioners for individual units? Will there be separate heating systems for the apartments and for the common areas? Electric boiler system in addition to air source heat pumps? Any geothermal component? I ask because this could be useful information for future developments to, you know, follow the path that you're going by. This is a large building, lot of square footage. Obviously, you've decided electrification's feasible. I'd love to know the details about that. Secondly, what's your backup system for electricity? I'm guessing gas generator, but I'm hoping battery storage, at least partly. Finally, why is electrification not, electrification on day one especially, not in the draft development agreement? The building is taking, taking advantage of the 30% height exception for sustainability. I mean, I'm, obviously, if they needed electrification to achieve that extra height, to earn that exception, there would be no need to have it in the development agreement because it would run with the zoning. I understand that. However, in this case, they don't need full electrification on day one, which is what they're stating, in order to get that exception. They only have to basically make it electric-ready with some vague, run some conduit, basically, and, you know, have some electrical panels that can accommodate that. So my question is-
So my question is, since immediate electrification on day one is extra, shouldn't it be in the development agreement? Otherwise, it's not enforceable. So my question for you, Mr. Walker, is if you're, whether you're amenable to including immediate electrification in the development agreement, and if not, why not? But in general, I support this project. I think the sustainability aspects of it, while they do not meet the AG0 Plan standards, which are net-zero energy construction, are superior to most. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Do we have remote callers?
There are no hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Give it a few more minutes, seconds. Sorry. Sorry. Okay. With that, we're going to close public comment. Okay, I'm going to read the proposed motion, which is that the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission approves the 1209 South University Site Plan dated January 31st, 2025, subject to the combination of all lots prior to the application of any permits except demolition permits, and recommends approval of the development agreement. Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Councilmember Dish. We are in discussion. Who'd like to kick us off? Commissioner Mills.
Tonight, Mr. Garber took my list, and so I'm going to pick up exactly where he left off and just ask for some details about electrification. And then I do have the question about the development agreement. But my question was specifically about the backup system and how you guys were handling that, but also if there are any details, because this is exciting to have this on day one, so kind of how, how you're handling the heating elements.
So the, the project is utilizing a water source heat pump system with a central plant of cooling towers and centralized boilers on the top. The generator will be a backup gas generator, and the hot water system is a centralized plant as well on the top.
All right. Thank you. Great. And then the question about the, so overall, and I think that the one about the development agreement is not you, this probably a staff thing. Overall, I think that this fits. I actually, I kind of like the pedestrian part. I think it'll break up what it looks like on the street to some extent. Like, I think it's a super clever use, and I think it's an attractive-looking building. For staff, on, I noticed that it wasn't in the development agreement either, and that we were talking about it. Is there, if we don't have it on day one, is that problematic with the UDC? And if it, if we're expecting it on day one, is there a reason to not include it in the development agreement?
So, and I will rely on Deputy Planning Manager Kelly to supplement my information. From what I gather from the requirements for the sustainability bonus, so it's a 30% height bonus for sustainability. We require buildings to be all-electric-ready or to have, like, basically a waiver letter from DTE explaining that there's not the, the capacity for that site. As far as in the UDC, I don't think there's a date specific that it has to be, like, online. I think it's those two pathways. If there's anything else.
That's correct. Planner Shake shared essentially what I would share, and the, if you're, you're talking about different mechanisms for compliance, this project would be required to meet what they set out to do with the sustainability bonus in order to achieve a certificate of occupancy. So we check for compliance with the, the zoning and the site plan and the site compliance process, and this would be one of the items that we would check for. So since, if, if you want, I'm not aware of past instances where we have put this into a development agreement. It could come under advisement for city council. I would want to probably get a little bit of a check-in with the city attorney's office. I'm not sure about that.
Okay. I, so I just want to repeat what I heard and make sure that I understand it right. So the, and for everybody else's benefit, I pulled up the UDC, so I'm going to read the sustainability component. When and where a solar collector covers at least 60% of the building footprint, that's definitely going to happen because you can't get there, like, you have to have it, you have to have the 60% solar onsite. And the electrical panels of the building have the capacity to solely power the site by electricity, including any conduit and other necessary infrastructure for future conversions, if complete electrification is not achievable at the time of the initial construction. So no matter what, you're not going to issue the certificate of occupancy unless they, their electrical panels show that they can be fully electric, and no matter what, they have to have the conduit and necessary infrastructure. And what I heard you say potentially, but maybe I'm making this up, is that unless they have a letter from DTE saying, "We can't hook you up right now," like, the expectation is that they're going to hook up.
Or that they can't be, yeah, exactly.
That they can't be all-electric.
Those, yeah, there's those two pathways. The solar panels is like step one. Having the infrastructure in there now, like, or, you know, at the beginning is step two. If there's essentially a waiver, I don't know if it's officially called a waiver letter, but like a letter basically stating that that region of the town or whatever doesn't have the grid capacity to be all-electric, it has to be all-electric ready. And other, and other than that, like, it's, the idea is, you're expecting it to be, like, at day one.
Got it. And it sounds like you don't need that waiver from DTE because they're telling you, you've got it. And so this is why, one and two together, you can just plug it and run. You don't have to worry about guests.
I'll let the applicant reply, but like, yeah, I think staff worked in V1 and V2 of this, around V1, maybe in V2 of this project, exploring those possibilities. Because I think the applicant initially was thinking that the, there was not capacity in that part of town, and we're exploring the pathway through the latter. But through further research, and the applicant can further respond to their work with DTE to get these, that level of information.
Yeah, and we have had multiple meetings with DTE, and there are some upgrades that they are doing in order to, they'll add another piece of equipment behind the site in that easement, but the expectation is, they've indicated that they can support it.
And we have the capacity letter from them stating that there's capacity.
Awesome. So from my perspective, like, knowing how that capacity letter works is the assurance to me, like, in order for them to not hook up on day one, what I'm hearing in the future for anybody, not these people, because they're good, they're going to hook up on day one. But from anyone else to not hook up on day one, the expectation is that they've got that letter.
It comes before that, actually, Planning Commissioner Mills. It comes through the site plan evaluation process. If you are expecting to use the 30% height bonus.
You've got to have it.
You either have to show that you'll be all-electric-ready with a letter or all-electric immediately. Like, that's something that staff looks for in the site plan review process. One of those two pathways, essentially.
Awesome. Thank you for clarifying. So I'm cool without, in the, no need to look at the development agreement. Thank you. I'm excited about this.
Thank you. We're going to go to Commissioner Adams.
So I don't know if this helps or answers the question, but the development agreement states that any failure to comply with the site plan is a material breach. The site plan states that the building is planned for 100% electrification on day one, and the building will provide all-electric heating sources. So is planned for? That's a little squishy, but it's there. I mean, it's something.
Great. Any other comments with respect to this site plan? Commissioner White.
I want to talk about biking. So you mentioned that you, along with your development partners, have some other housing developments that are on university. I was surprised to see with 625 beds that you were only providing 79 biking spaces. Could you explain to us why you limited yourself to 79?
I can address some of it. The, the location is a big driver, just being so steps away from the university. We really are trying to encourage pedestrian traffic and walking where we can. We also typically encourage students to keep their bikes in their rooms, in, in their units, too. But we don't, in other projects that are similarly as walkable and close to campus, we've seen these bike rooms really be underutilized, so feel it's the right size for where we're located.
And is that, so this squishy statement was what I just heard, like, you see that it's underutilized, but you have developments along this corridor, and do you know whether or not those bike rooms are being utilized?
I don't have official numbers, but I have security cameras in those rooms that look at a lot of empty bike spaces.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner White. Do we have any other comments from questions, thoughts, impressions, aspirations? Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Thank you. I'm very curious, this, first of all, I'm very supportive of this project. I think the unit mix is great, and the mix within the floors is great. I loved your rendering where you shot, like, right up against university towers. Back in my day, university towers was the tallest building around, and it's shown its age, and I like that you're, like, trying to, you know, it kind of, it helps mask it a little bit. I was very struck by your pedestrian-friendly vehicular access comment. How do the vehicles trigger those bollards? Just thinking from like a, like, safety perspective, like, love that pedestrians can walk through. I love that you're prioritizing them. How do we make sure that they're safe?
So we have an RFID reader that's located, we're showing, I think, like, on the column inside the entry, and that RFID reader will scan a credential in the windshield of any vehicle or authorized person who has that credential, and then that will automatically lower the bollards and move the gate. We would also have folks in our management office just be able to control it from, within the management office, if there's guests or anybody who needs to use it that doesn't have a credential. But it should be automatic.
And it'll be very clear to this driver that they are entering a space that is pedestrian priority.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments, thoughts from commissioners? Okay, just my thought, actually, one of the things that stuck out to me was the lack of an FAR because we don't require in D1 anymore. I did a quick calculation. It is 0.39 acres, 16,988 square feet. FAR is about 13.5. So I think in the past, we've had 900%. This is really kind of pushing up to 1,300. And so this is kind of the efficacy or the efficiency that the, the reduction of, or the removal of the FAR, this is probably the first example, is from, well, from my standpoint. So as far as setback, it complies, permitted use complies. So again, from the strict adherence to the application of the D1 zoning code, this hits those, and from what we've heard, we need more student housing. So I'm inclined to support this proposal. Any other thoughts from other commissioners? If not, again, as a clarification for the process here, site plan gets approved here subject to the assembly of the lots, and then the development agreement goes to city council. So without further ado, I think we will have a roll call vote. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Weatherby.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Councilmember Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
How about Kerry's?
All right. Good luck with the development agreement, and good luck with closing and everything.
Thank you so much.
So, all right. With that, we are moving on to the next item, which is item number 9B. This is 343 South Fifth. This is the proposed rezoning from public land, PL to D1 zoning, to pursue a future private-public development. No development is proposed currently. This is a 1.21-acre site, including the library building and the adjacent surface parking lot. The site is located in Ward 5, with staff recommendation of approval. We first move to petitioner presentation with Mr. Eli from the ADL, and then, actually, are we doing staff?
Sorry, I'm just playing out the presentation.
If you could just give us a brief moment to load the presentation for our next applicant, that would be appreciated.
Yeah. Yeah, sounds good. Back in the days of COVID, this is when I would play that theme song, the Jeopardy theme song, so.
Yes.
Yeah. 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 You guys picked an interesting.
Thank you for your patience on the. I'd like a cookie.
Not right now, but thank you very much.
Yeah.
Would anyone like a cookie? Yeah. Yeah.
You can do open in desktop app, Mariana. You were just done.
I don't even like sweets.
And the three dots thing, hamburgers. Open in desktop. Try that. And just.
Okay. Oh.
This is a different Adobe than I usually use.
Control L does.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening. I'm Eli Naberger. I'm Director of the Ann Arbor District Library, and we're here tonight to talk to you about a rezoning request for the current site of the current downtown library. I want to be clear that this is completely separate from what city council talked about last night. This project, we would anticipate to proceed regardless of what happens with the ballot initiative that the city council put on the ballot for August. So this is about the library seeking rezoning to enable potential redevelopment options for the current site. So you're not going to get, this is the site, as you've seen, there's actually currently three parcels. After the rezoning, we'd like to request combining of those three parcels at some point as well. But originally, those two other parcels were separate businesses, and so those were turned into library parking lot as one of a, part of a previous addition. You're not going to get a presentation from the library without some old photos. So this is the Beal House, which stood on that site in 1910. It was the home of Junius Beal, who was a local publisher and ran a newspaper and also acquired the assets of Dr. Alvin Woodchase, the Chase's Steam Printing House, still stands on the corner of Catherine and Main Street. And one thing I love about this photo is you can see here, let's see if I got Mouse, you can see, this right here still exists in Ann Arbor. Anybody know where that is? The Clements Library! Give Commissioner Weatherby a cookie. Yes. So yes, those are carriage steps, and that was so that the residents of the house could, could board the carriages, and those books stand outside the Clements Library now. So by 1956, it had lost some of its splendor and was, had been acquired as the potential site for the new downtown library, because our, the library had already outgrown its Carnegie Library that had been built for the, had been built by Andrew Carnegie and operated by the city, and that now, the facade of that building still stands. It's the, on the north face of North Quad on Huron Street. So, I'm sorry, on Wasna. Well, right where they changed names, right. So there was considerable discussion at that time of whether or not the down, the new downtown library would be built by the school district, because it was a service of the schools, on that site or at a site on West Park, where West Park now currently protrudes through to Miller. That was one of the sites they were talking about. But there's a wonderful article where the then-director of the library says he's received the assurance of the public that they will pay to park downtown to visit the library. And that was 1956. So here's a great article from 1958 where there are two new libraries in the city, and the downtown Ann Arbor District Library, which is then the Ann Arbor Public Library, and what was then called the Ungraduate Library, or the Ugly, right? And now called the Shapiro Library, that's been remodeled multiple times in the interim. And you can also see a photo of the reading room there on the left down there. Here's a photo of the multipurpose room in 1962. If you've attended any meetings in that room, it looks very similar at this point. We've lost the pegboard walls, but other than that, this is a mock UN that happened in that room, and that was a very cool event. And the projectionist booth has been replaced by a little bit different equipment. In 1971, the library that had opened in 1957 had already outgrown its needs, and there was an addition funded by the school district to build on an additional first and second floor on the back of the original building. So this shows the construction of that in 1973. Here in 1980, a photo from the roof of the now-long-departed YMCA, showing the addition, the original building in the front and the addition in the back. Another thing that you can see here is on the top of the, on the top of the porch, had originally been planned as green space, that it would be planted up there. This is an Alden Dow building, and many things, he planned that on a lot of buildings, and it barely made it through one season. Here in 1980, a photo from the roof of the now-long-departed YMCA, showing the addition, the original building in the front and the addition in the back. Another thing that you can see here is on the top of the, on the top of the porch, had originally been planned as green space, that it would be planted up there. This is an Alden Dow building, and many things, he planned that on a lot of buildings, and it barely made it through one season because you had to get a ladder to get up there, and the janitor broke his leg the first time trying to do it, so they stopped doing it. That was a quote from several predecessors of mine ago, that the, didn't last very long. And then, in 1989, the school board decided to expand the library again, add it on further to the back, as well as adding the third and fourth floor. As you can imagine, this is three buildings put together into one, and this seam between the first and second floor in the back and the third and fourth floor is now giving us a lot of trouble. It's one of the many problems with the building currently in that we, basically, as we discovered, we saw some masonry starting to bulge, things starting to loosen up. We had things investigated because we didn't want it to fall onto anybody, and we found that it was not built according to the drawings. There was waterproofing missing, there was flashing that was missing, there were metal supports added to support the brick that was not in the original drawings. Those original supports were corroding and swelling and pushing off the pieces of the building. We're now in a process to add what we have unfortunately started calling Frankenstein stitches to go all the way around that seam, all the way around the building, because the masonry is holding to each itself very well, but they're missing tiebacks, and we are concerned about large chunks of it falling off. So, we will be adding some remedial details to the building to keep those from falling off. But that's just the actual structural system of the building and the facade. The fact is, this building restrains library service every day. We are, use of rooms in the public libraries up 34% over the last year alone, and we have an improvised auditorium on the first floor that was once the reading room, and we have to move things around, and we are turning people who would like to use spaces in the downtown library away constantly. As many of you know, in 2012, we sought a bond that was not successful. So, since then, we've looked at what are ways that we can fund this project without asking the voters for a new millage. Our polling showed us there still was fairly soft support for a new tax specifically for the library, so we've been looking at other options. That leads us to our request tonight. This is just a map of the downtown zone, as you're all well aware. The downtown library exists surrounded on almost all sides by D1. It is D2 across, or C1A, rather, across the street, no, I'm sorry, that is D2 across the street, and then on the former Y lot is the PUD for that project. So, it's clearly surrounded, including the space right behind us that has currently got a 16-story student housing project under construction. So, clearly, D1 zoning is what's appropriate for this site, and rezoning the current library, downtown library to D1 opens up new possibilities, meeting community needs and library needs, delivering a new downtown library, new housing, and new opportunities without new tax revenue. The idea would be that the library would occupy several floors on the bottom, and we would sell then air rights to other development partners and use the proceeds from that to service the bonds to build a new library. Or, as I like to call it, picking the developers up by their ankles and shaking them till a new library falls out. So, we want to establish that this is not something that's new to us, this is something that's happening all across the US. Here's an article from the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy about a project in Portland. Cities are tackling the housing crunch by building above the library. Here's a project in Chicago, Independence Library and Apartments, opened in 2019 with multiple stories of housing above a library branch. Here's a new project in Manhattan, Inwood, opened just last fall. It's called the Eliza, it's 10 stories of affordable housing above a public library branch. And then, we also have the Brooklyn, Brooklyn Public Library Sunset Park Branch, which replaced a building that was built in 1905 and opened in 2023 with six stories of housing above a new library branch. Now, those are all branches. We're not aware of a project where someone has replaced their downtown library yet with a new library funded by housing above. And then, finally, here's the Taylor Street Apartments and Little Italy Branch Library, Chicago Public Library, opened in 2019. Now, most of these projects are done by libraries that are either part of the city government or much more entwined with the city government than AADL is. AADL is an independent taxing entity, we're not part of the city, we're not part of the county, of our own elected board, our own dedicated tax. As a result, we don't have natural partners, the way that, for example, the city of Chicago was building, they needed to build a public library, they needed to build affordable housing. So, it was really one client. So, this is a little bit more complicated than those projects, but it's also something that has a lot more potential because of the proximity to transit in particular. Here's, I love this map of every metro area in the USA where more than 5% of population uses public transit to get to work. Now, granted, we had a lot of work to do, of course, as a nation, but there's little Washtenaw County punching way above its weight as being just about the only place in Midwest outside of Chicago where more than 5% of the population uses public transit to get to work. And transit has become a major part of public library development around the world. This is the Doc One Library in Arhus. This is a combination of public library and civic offices. It's kind of like the stuff, like the clerk's office and things like that is in this building. And one of the things that was amazing about this, I'm almost out of time, is that they, at 5:00 PM, they ring a chime, they say, "All the staff are going home, everyone have a nice night." And the public is allowed to stay in the building. I don't think that's something that would happen in our new library, but it's a lovely idea. Here's another new project in Calgary. This has a terrific, it's built over a light rail line, and this is a gorgeous project. And in 2019, we produced a feasibility study for a mixed-use library that studied the possibility and the feasibility of it. This is just a cross-section of what that could look like. This is from 2019, that world doesn't exist anymore. I don't know that we would include underground parking, I don't know that we'd include commercial office space. But here's what it looks like if the project across the street gets off the ground, there's a dotted line showing the core spaces space, and there's the downtown library right in the middle. So, here's all the different sort of partner possibilities we have. We'd love to do senior housing or independent living, affordable housing, workforce housing, market rate, we'd love to have a visual arts partner or a performing arts partner or an educational partner. We are already working on nonprofit tenants and café food tenants and business art incubators, something we're about to try at the downtown library right now. So, sorry for running over, but just a little bit, but those are the slides, and please let us know what your questions are.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. With that, we're going to move on to staff presentation.
Thank you, and thank you to the petitioner for that great overview and for the very cool historic photos. I'll just reiterate that we are talking about the downtown library. It is a 1.21 acre site, which includes the building and the adjacent surface parking lot. This is a request to rezone from public land to D1 downtown core district to pursue a future private-public partnership. There is no development that is proposed currently, this is just the rezoning, there is no associated site plan. But as the petitioner said, the intent is to redevelop the site with a new library, new housing, and potential other amenities in the future. The petitioner also mentioned the feasibility study, which is linked in the staff report, and gave some images of what a potential development would look like. In terms of the D1 zoning, planning staff finds that downtown core is appropriate for this location. The currently adopted master plan does recommend downtown core zoning for this site, and D1 allows for high-density mixed-use development, which is what is being described here as a potential new development for the site. If rezoned D1, the site could accommodate a new library, a mixed-use building, including a library ranch, or it could allow for any other permitted uses in the D1 should the library decide to relocate and make the site available for other uses. Just to note that if rezoned D1, the downtown character overlay zoning districts will apply, and that in this case would be the Midtown Character Overlay District, and that would regulate the basic building form, including height, street wall height and massing articulation, and this is different from the development standards for the public land district, which are generally none for things like building coverage setbacks and height. So, the rezoning will offer more predictability for the building form if and when the site is developed, redeveloped. And then, overall, yes, staff does recommend approval.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We'll first hear from those present, and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone, or raise hand on Zoom for phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement that's your turn to speak, and please ensure you're in a quiet area. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Do we have any of us present that would like to speak at this time?
Thank you, Chair Lee. Ken Garber again. I have no background on this project, I hadn't read up on it, and I'm just rezoning. My only question at this time is about the timing. Why now? Why apply for the change from PL to D1 at this time? Might it not be better to wait until we have a development concept in place so we know, perhaps, what we're looking at in the future? Otherwise, I'm generally supportive, but that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Do we have other folks that would like to speak at this time?
There is one hand raised, Mr. Chair.
We'll go to remote comments. Yes.
Adam Duskevich, you have permission to address the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Adam Duskevich again, on Las Vegas Drive in the Fourth Ward. I just want to quickly thank the library for bringing this forward and for your great presentation. I'll be eagerly awaiting to see the plans you come up with. I'm the kind of weirdo who, on a vacation to Denmark this summer, dragged my family to visit Doc One, the new library in Arhus, and it was cool to see it in your presentation. It's a wonderful space, but it doesn't have housing, so it seems to me that this will be even better. Libraries are so important, especially in this day and age. I can't wait to see our new, tall, world-class library, and who knows, maybe I will even be able to live above it someday. I wholeheartedly support this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other callers on the line?
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. Give it just a second. Okay, with that, we're going to close public comment. I'm going to read the proposed motion, which is that the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby waives the area plan requirement as provided in Section 5.29.78 and 5.29.7B of the Unified Development Code, because no new construction is currently proposed and recommends that the mayor and city council approve the zoning of 343 South Fifth Avenue to D1 Downtown Core District. Moved by Commissioner Weich, seconded by Commissioner Weatherby. All right, we are in discussion. Would anyone like to kick us off? Yes, Commissioner Abrams.
Thank you. I don't know if this is a question for you or for staff, but I just, I know that this is different than what City Council was discussing, but I am interested to know, or maybe just need some clarification about the city amendment voted in 2018 that I think articulates that this be held in perpetuity. Can you just clarify for me? Yeah, I think I'm confused.
Sure. This is the existing charter language specifies city-owned land. This is not city-owned land, it's owned by the public library.
Got it, it's zone PL but not city-owned. Perfect.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Weich.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Garber's question of why now, just to give you an opportunity to answer if you want it.
Sure, thank you. So, the reason we want to ask this question now is to have this, public land precludes private ownership and private development. So, we wanted to have this hurdle out of the way before we started talking to potential development partners, as opposed to heading into those negotiations and those discussions with the zoning as a potential question and a potential point where the project could become derailed. So, we wanted to see if there was support in the community for the rezoning request so that we could have that done before beginning to talk to development partners about it.
So, this is because you still have soft support for a new millage to do the development that you want to do? So, because your, sort of evaluation of that says that you can't get the funding that way, it's better for you to attempt to do it with a development partner and then get the library?
Well, yes, and also, we have a housing crisis, so we want to see what we can do about that. You know, it's, it's a, our board feels that it is a, we need to run out the potential of being able to fund this without new tax revenue before going back to voters and asking for an additional millage.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherby.
So, most of me loves this, but there's a tiny little part of me that thinks if we make this change, you could just sell it, right? Like, there's no requirement that the AADL keeps a downtown library at all, right? There is, and is that my worst-case scenario? Well, it actually still gives us the opportunity to build, I mean, you're not going to sell it for a dollar.
No.
So, in my mind, I think, okay, the worst-case scenario would be that there is no downtown library and that there is housing there instead. And that would be terrible, but also not terrible. So, I think for me, I know most of you here from the library, and I trust you, but the, you know, the things happen. I mean, we know that. I'm, I'd love to ask you if you're committed to keeping a downtown library, but I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, please do, we are absolutely committed.
Are you committed to keeping a downtown library?
Yes, we are committed to a downtown library on that site.
Okay.
Right? This is, as Josie always said, it's the catbird seat, right? We are in an excellent location, we are directly across from the busiest transit hub, not just in the county, but, you know, as we saw.
Right, I mean, and you're going to, I mean, the transit is coming there more and more.
Exactly, and with the arrangement of ATA's network, we're in exactly the best place to be. We own the property now, we could not acquire that property, you know, and it puts us in a great position, and we are deeply committed to a new library on that site. And we could have sold it without this zoning change, too.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, comments? Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
This is not a very well-thought-out comment, but I, I'm just really, I thank you so much for your presentation and your commitment to, you know, not just recognizing that the library is such an important community space and wanting something newer and better, but working to solve other community issues. I just did a quick Google search to see, like, I couldn't find any other, like, main libraries either that are doing what you are desiring to do, to be the first in the country to do that, I think would be incredible. So, thank you. I love everything that you're doing at the library, very excited for the 2025 Summer Game.
Excellent, thank you very much. And with no humility, there are a lot of things we do at AADL that we're the first to do in the US.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts? As a clarification process, a rezoning does go to City Council, this is simply a recommendation. If nobody else, I guess, in absence of the comprehensive plan currently, the update proceeding right now, I'm deferring to the 2009 land use plan element as well as the downtown plan, which does contemplate that this is a downtown core. We saw the overall context of the D1 surrounding it, again, health, safety, general welfare being a driver of rezoning decisions, I am in support of it. So, with that, we are going to a roll call vote. Staff.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Weich.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams.
Yes.
Councilmember Dish.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Weatherby.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Enthusiastically, yes.
That enthusiastically carries.
All right, thank you. Good luck at City Council.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our last regular item, which is 9C. This is the introduction of 2325 Crystal Way. This is a proposed rezoning from R4A into PL public land zoning. The law was recently required by the city for an expansion of the Hickory Nature Area. The site is located in Ward One. Staff recommendation is approval, and with that, we will go to staff presentation.
Thank you. This is 2325 Hickory Way, or, sorry, Crystal Way that you see on your screen, and it is, it was recently donated to the city. It is 9.8, 9.859 acres and was donated as part of the adjacent townhouse development at 2601 Pontiac Trail, which you can see right here where my cursor is, hopefully, directly to the right of the site. That site plan was approved in 2019. It is known as The One, formerly it was known as The cottages at Barton Green, and it is a 32-acre site that was developed with 221 dwelling units. This donation was reviewed and recommended by the Land Acquisition Committee of the Parks Advisory Commission at the November 9, 2020, meeting. It will be an expansion of the existing Hickory Nature Area, which is this kind of skinny parcel just to the north. That was also donated to the city as part of the North Sky Development in 2008. So, it will be expansion of, an expansion of an existing public park, and with that, purchasing or accepting land donations does not automatically change the zoning designation, but because it is now owned by the city of Ann Arbor, public land is the appropriate zoning district. So, staff recommends approval with the rezoning, of the rezoning, which is consistent with the intent and purpose of the PL district and meets all applicable standards.
All right.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to move on to public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this particular item. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone or use the raise hand feature on Zoom. For phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please ensure you're in a quiet area. And for all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Do we have anyone present that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, do we have any remote callers?
Phone number ending in 534. You have permission to address the planning commission. I think that Zoom just crashed.
Oh, okay. Let's hold for just a second for technical difficulties.
I hope you can hear me now.
We can now, thank you.
Excellent. This is Tom Stalberg again, 1202 Trayver Street. I wanted to just let you know that The One was sold to a large student rental company out of Austin, Texas. It's been renamed Ann Arbor Trails, I believe is the name. That company, by the way, was not long after that sale. Their assets were acquired by Blackstone. Yes, that Blackstone. Not relevant to the, what you're voting on tonight, except to know that this is the real estate world that we live in. These are financial instruments. Housing is secondary. So that's all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Any other callers?
There is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay, give it a second. Okay, with that, we're going to close public comment. All right, I'm going to read the proposed motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the Hickory Nature Area expansion rezoning from R4A to PL. Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Mills. We are in discussion. Oh, Councilmember Dish.
No, it's fine. I thought it had been renamed, so I'm glad to be reminded, because I drive, I mean, I drive bike, whatever bike. Why did it take so long to rezon it? Yeah, or, I mean...
I think this is just one of the cleanups that we're doing. There are a number of parks or other, you know, university-owned land, publicly-owned land that we're going through and trying to update the zoning map so that it's accurate. And I think that this one just kind of got lost along the way and is now maybe, I'm not sure exactly why now is the time.
Oh, it's just, like, why not earlier, I think, was the question. So it got lost. That sounds good. Okay.
That's exactly right, and you could expect potentially some more of these, in particular U of M acquisitions, that we'll be trying to batch out over the course of this year.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Just a quick question. Is this being developed at all into a park, or is it just the plan is for it to stay as it looks, just like a wooded area? Or is that TBD?
I'm not sure. I think that's more of a question for parks to answer.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? If not, this seems pretty straightforward, administrative cleanup, and again, a quick point of order for clarification. This is rezoning being recommended to city council. All right, with that, we'll head to roll call vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Councilmember Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Enthusiastically, yes.
I would say that tepidly carries.
Yes.
Only one enthusiastic.
Yes. Great, motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to public comment, other business which there are none, and then we'll move on to public comment. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone or use raise hand feature on Zoom. For phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom, and you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please ensure you're in a quiet area. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, do we have any remote callers?
There are no hands raised.
Give it two seconds. Okay, with that, I'll close public comment. Takes us to agenda item 12, which is commission proposed business. Are there any? Yes, Commissioner White?
Okay, a couple of things. One, a question about who updates the planning website. Is that us? Is that you? Is there some other person who's responsible for that?
Different pages are responsibility of different staff on the team based on their specific area. You might have noticed that there was a recent switchover in the content management system. It caused links to fall out of working order for about a week as the site re-indexed, but yes. In short, each department is responsible for, in large part, for their content. We're aware that we need some cleanup, and I'll let you get to your, your actual point, but I'm dreading it.
No, don't dread it. It's happiness. I'm smiling behind my mask. So if we could just get our planning commission assignments updated, it's still, it's slightly out of date because we have a new planning commissioner, and they haven't been added, and their appointment to their commission hasn't been added?
You know what? That might have been one of the, if you made a change in this interim period, then it wouldn't carry over to the new website. I think we did fix that, but I think it might have been an item that didn't carry over correctly. So I will look at that.
And then the other thing I think might be helpful as we embark on the comprehensive plan is to add a section here. There are lots of places where the comprehensive plan is linked, but it's not directly here so that people could start on this page, learn about where we are, like the timetable, because I think a lot of people are starting to tune in. And the information we heard today was there wasn't citizen participation, but as we know, there were thousands of hours and thousands of contacts over the last two years since we, or year and a half, I guess, since we started the process. But some residents or residents haven't been able to tune into that, and so if we can have that more front and center, I think that that could help if it's something that we can ask for for our website. And then the other thing that I'm hearing in the community is questions about conflicts of interest, and I think it would be helpful to also bring to the forefront that our bylaws have a whole section, a detailed section on our conflicts of interest as well as our annual disclosures, that state we have to disclose that we live in the city, who our employer is, and whether or not anyone that is presenting before the commission we have business with so that people know that as volunteers, that's something that is required and that we comply with that, just to help with information sharing. So those were just some things that I thought could at least inform our residents about how planning commission works and how they could participate in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dish.
This isn't exactly, this is definitely not business. I just wanted to say that I was looking up that contact information or outreach information, and on November 20th, 2024, the consultants resulted, reported that there had been 35,000 website views for the planning website, 3,000 survey participants, seven events at downtown and branch libraries, 380-plus attendees. That's probably a good number, but it's interesting that there's so much more website views, and who knows if those are multiple views by the same person. But, and but, and I looked on MLive, and MLive only started publishing any stories January 30th and February 11th of this year. And so I suspect why we're starting to get response is that it's only now hitting MLive, and that's so unfortunate, and that's clearly not anybody's fault.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up of the request for the comprehensive plan spotlight? Commissioner White, are you referring to highlighting this on the landing page for atugov.org to have that be more prominent?
No, I was thinking on the actual planning commission page, like, we have our work plan, we have the assignments, we have bylaws. And since this is such a big part of what we're going to be working on this next year, I thought it might just be nice to have a heading that says the comprehensive plan and then a link off to the content that already exists. So I feel like the content is already there. It's just not aggregated. And so if you are new to city government and how to find information, that can be hard. Like, I didn't even know that we had the GovDelivery email service where you can go and subscribe to all these things, and then every time something happens, the city sends you a note and says, "This meeting is happening, that meeting is happening." So that was helpful to me. So that was my suggestion.
So we do arrange certain things based on the, the page popularity, and atugov.org/planing will lead you to the primary planning website, which has a sidebar where it shows the comprehensive plan kind of right away. And that's typically how I access it, and then we have atugov.org/compplan, which we share our short URLs, so the, I'll think about it.
I see to you. So yeah, I can't control it anyway, so I'm asking.
Could you also specify which page that the assignments are incorrectly described on?
If we could maybe take that one offline.
Which one?
Oh, the specificity of probably Commissioner Norton's presence. Is that the one that you're referring to?
It's all of them. There, it just needs to be updated.
Okay. Just, I don't know that it's necessarily like a total all-commission item if it's a similar date.
We just, we just have no mechanism to talk publicly about it, so that was the reason why I was doing it at this time. So if this is not the right place, then I think we need to amend our agenda to be able to talk about things like this, because this is the only time we can do it publicly.
I was just simply mentioning, this seems like a clerical slash administrative thing that could be handled.
I'll defer to you, Chair.
Yeah, you're the chair. Adams looked like he wanted to say something.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other commission proposed business? If not, I'd just like to say thank you all. This is obviously hard work, and thank you for being good public volunteers, to all of you. I think there's a lot of really great folks here, so. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our final item, which is adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Abrams, seconded by Commissioner Mills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.